All materials having any bearing on this meeting? Item D, approval of minutes of regular meeting on December 15th, 2014, as on file in the city clerk's office. Item E, approval of treasurer's report of claims in the amount of $596,745.80. Item F, approval of Boswa report of claims in the amount of $51,009.80. Item G, resolution number 5715, entering into a farm lease with James Broad for crop land adjacent to the industrial park and for the old fairgrounds property and other property adjacent to the Big Blue River. And item H, resolution number 5716, entering into a haying agreement with Joel Fossler for various parcels. Does any of the city councilmen want any item removed from the consent agenda? Anyone from the public? Mr. Catlin?
Mayor, I move that all the items listed under the consent agenda be approved, accepted, and ratified as presented.
Been moved by Catlin, seconded by Claybaugh. Your vote, please. And that is approved, seven, seven zero. There are no public hearings or bids. Next item on the agenda, and we're going to move the agenda item up a little bit or change it up a little bit. We're going to move to seven A and seven B. We have a presentation from Deisha Cruz, from the Nebraska Department of Economic Development, regarding the recertification for the community of Beatrice. Pleasure to have you here.
It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you all for inviting me. On behalf of the Nebraska diplomats and the Nebraska Department of Economic Development, I'm delighted and proud that the city of Beatrice has been recertified as an economic development certified community. This program is one of only a few in the nation that recognize communities for their economic development preparedness. Beatrice is one of 36 communities in the state who is certified in such a manner and earned its first certification designation in October of 2009. Designation as a Nebraska economic development certified community clearly indicates that Beatrice is prepared for business growth and ready to meet the needs of companies seeking new business locations or those that are here that may be interested in expanding. This designation sets you apart as a community that has the leadership and commitment necessary to successfully compete for jobs and investment in today's competitive environment. None of these are going to be new to any of you, but notable accomplishments for the city of Beatrice that were taken under consideration as part of this process over the last five years include, in 2012, Beatrice and Gage County entered an interlocal agreement and funded the newly formed Gage Area Growth Enterprise, Engage Organization, as the new economic development organization for the city and county. And earlier that year, the citizens of Beatrice renewed the city's economic development program, the LB-840, the Local Option Municipal Economic Development Act, which is now effective until 2023. The city of Beatrice provided the utility infrastructure for the new Beatrice Community Hospital and Healthcare Complex and the North Gate Development Area along Highway 77 on the north end of the city. The historic Carnegie Library Building was renovated in 2011, utilizing a combination of private funding, grants, and LB-840 funds. And the building now houses the Gage County Tourism, Beatrice Area Chamber of Commerce, and Engage offices. Current renovations, including new meeting rooms for the adult education and genealogy research, are underway for the Beatrice Public Library, utilizing a generous donation from the Beatrice Library Foundation. The city of Beatrice has been instrumental in supporting the growth of the community through three new manufacturing businesses located in the community, resulting in over 70 new jobs, 49 new small businesses opening in the county, resulting in over 140 new jobs, and nine existing business expansions, resulting in new capital investment and over 290 jobs. One major employer, Niapco, has gone through multiple facility expansions in recent years and is planning another expansion now. So congratulations to all of you for the work that is taking place in Beatrice and Gage County. And I'd like to present the mayor, as well, Tobias Templemire, the city administrator, and Glennis McClure from Engage to come forward.
(inaudible) Oh, be you guys.
That one break through.
(laughter)
I'll let you get hers first, and then I'll go.
PR.
(inaudible).
I couldn't resist.
(inaudible).
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
The mayor's first to win.
Any council member have a comment regarding the recertification? I think it's really great news that this has occurred, that we're working in partnership with Engage, and I think we, as community leaders, along with the county's board of supervisors, look forward to working with Engage and leading the city and county in the economic development progress, not only now but in the future for the months to come. Next on the agenda, I'm going to, we're going to have the Engage quarterly report from Glennis McClure. And Glennis, you want to bring along your guest that you brought with you? No, I'm talking about your assistant. Okay?
(laughter)
Either way.
Deisha, you can come up here too, if you like.
I gave her a copy of my report, too, so, all right. Well, thank you. Again, I'm Glennis McClure, Engage director, and this is Sheena Larson, my executive assistant with Engage. Sheena started with me in August. Yeah, okay, we had an intern for the summer, and I'm just really glad to have an assistant on board to help. In particular, through this last quarter, we had submitted the recertification application towards the end of September, and then I was told that you never get through it the first time, and so we had some updates and some things to do in October. And in particular, I asked Sheena to come tonight here because it was definitely a team effort. Sheena was wonderful to have onboard during that time. Tobias, I thank you very much for all the input that you provided and all of that. And I probably mentioned this in my last quarterly report, but it was quite a process. It was a good learning process. And for someone new in my position, even for Sheena, there was just a lot of things that we learned with it, and it was definitely worthwhile, and I hope that you all agree. So I would say that was our focus in September, and then we had some follow-ups and things to do in October, so that was part of this last quarter. There was a written report provided to you from this last quarter, October through December. I've just kind of highlighted some key points that I'd like to go through with you, and of course, if you have any questions, please let me know. In addition to, you know, the recertification, we've been working on the ECAP discovery tool. You've heard about the entrepreneurial communities activation process, worked with a team of folks here in the community to develop some questions, in particular, talking about some of the issues, projects, things that you might have an interest in as leaders. So we're actually asking folks this weekend next to complete that survey online. So it's go.unl.edu backslash Gage County. So it's not just for Beatrice, but it's for the whole county. And so if you haven't had a chance to take it, please take time to do it, so you're familiar with it. And then just send it out to folks that you know in the area that, you know, you would like to have take part in that. It's really pretty easy to do, and I would say 15 minutes and you're through it. So really encourage you to do that. That'll close out on Friday, the 16th, and we'll have then meetings, starting in February 3rd is our first community meeting. We've got facilitators from the university that'll be starting to talk about the results and then what we can do in action planning using those results. So I hope that all of you can participate in some of those follow-up meetings once we have that.
Would you give us that, that email again?
What's that?
The email, the website.
Go.unl.edu backslash Gage County. Just put Gage County all together in one word.
Thank you.
Okay? Those were also in, thank you, those were also in the BPW bill, so we put a flyer in, and hopefully that will make a difference. But it's just one of those things, we want to keep reminding people this weekend next to get that done. And we do have, I think it's on Wednesday night at the Carnegie Building, the chamber staff will be helping people if they don't have access to online and they want to come in, they'll be helping folks with that. And Sheena and I are going to be down in Wyomore helping folks at the library there complete the survey. So if you hear of people that need help, just have them contact us or at the chamber. And also Main Street's participating, I know they'll help as well, too, so, okay? So another, what we have done, you've heard about the branding project, and so we've had some meetings along those lines. In particular, the company that we chose, the FES Group, has been contacting folks. So we met and came up with a list of people, leaders and citizens that they should, that they've been surveying, and so we're continuing to work on that branding project, and it's just kind of been the research phase right now. I want to mention that we did a Manufacturing Day luncheon on October 3rd, that was National Manufacturing Day. We had a good group of folks there, and we had, Deisha's assistant, Laura Husky, down as a speaker for that, and I think that was pretty well received. And one of the things we're going to do in follow-up is this Thursday, we have a manufacturing advisory group. We're trying to form a group where we can stay in close touch with the manufacturers, you know, again, some of our key larger employers, and visit with them about their issues and maybe have some educational types of speakers. This week, we have a manufacturing extension partnership liaison coming in to present to that group on Thursday. So we're trying to make ongoing contact and stay in touch with the businesses here in that regard. I wanted to mention during this last quarter, though, too, we lost StorCraft, and so that involved some of my time. I was able to meet with the employees in the rapid response meeting that particularly the Department of Labor put together. There was a job fair, we encouraged our contact list of employers to participate in that. We really wanted to have good local participation in that job fair, so hopefully they, if they're looking at hiring folks, they would hire some of those people. I think there were some good connections made there. I have visited, yes?
I had put something, I saw on your list that you had fielded calls and inquiries on StorCraft. Did any of the older StorCraft guys get ahold of you about their pension funds? Were there any of the inquiries for that?
No, I, no. I haven't dealt with any of those issues.
Well, they've called me, I've had 12, 13, and I just don't know where to go on that.
Oh, wow.
So I thought if you...
No, I haven't turned any back.
Thank you, thank you.
There have been a few that, you know, in result, were thinking of starting their own business, and in particular, some of them have attended a couple of the sessions that we had. We had the SBA down to do a luncheon learn to talk about those options, and also Grow Nebraska, which is a marketing resource, so we've had some of those folks attend those as, they were open to everyone, but in particular, there was some contacts made there. Working with our partners, Black Hills Resources and Economic Development, there was a list of about 350 contacts that were sent to us, email contacts, and these would be site selectors and real estate professionals that work with large companies that might be out searching around for where else they could go, that kind of thing. We had 350 contacts we set up, constant contact, and sent out email messages to about 350 of those. Last I looked, we had about, an open rate of about 25%. So when those emails go out and they're pretty, you know, in mass, you know, you know that they're not all going to be open. So we did, we did do that. And I wanted to mention that I was able to attend the Fabtech Trade Show in November in Atlanta, and, you know, I found that it was, it's really beneficial, I think, for us to have a representative at some of those trade shows. We can't go to all of them, but that was the first one I had attended, and it's a huge trade show. But we partner with Nebraska Public Power District Economic Development and also Black Hills in doing those. And because I took the time, because it was just one of those that I had said, well, I want to get to one, I think this is a good one that can relate back to our community, I attended, but I didn't realize that there was probably 15 of us or so from Nebraska that attended, and we made contacts while we were on the trade show floor. We also had a booth, and those contacts, people that came by that we talked to would drop their name, you know, we would keep track of those, and those contacts came back to us. You know, think about all the communities in Nebraska and the economic development organizations in Nebraska. Because I attended that trade show, we got the contacts to follow up with. So it is, so I guess it's worth the time, probably, to do some of those, and particularly those that, you know, kind of mesh with what we have here. And in doing so, I got, later I got those contacts, and we sent out messages, and in fact, I had a follow-up phone call today, that was a really, really good phone call. So who knows what it'll come, what will happen with that, but, you know, if we don't make, get out and make the effort, you know, those things aren't going to happen, so.
You mentioned it, now you're committed.
Yeah. No, well, it was good. I'm just going to say, we'll see, we'll see what follows, what happens with that. So, that relates back a little bit to StorCraft. You know, again, we wanted to get the message out, because I think one of the largest, it just seems to me that one of the biggest issues in economic development right now is having available workforce, having good, dedicated, skilled workforce. And, you know, I think, you know, it was great that Black Hills reached out and said, hey, this is an opportune time now to send a note out to companies across, you know, particular Midwest companies to say, hey, we've got a workforce, we've got buildings, you know, can we, you know, mesh the two and make something happen? So we'll see, okay? I wanted to mention that through the last quarter, I counted up meeting with about 11 businesses for various reasons. About half of them are looking for financial assistance, some are looking for space, some are looking for just technical assistance types of questions. And so I try to field those or connect them with resources to answer their questions. We also stay in touch with small business resource folks. There's a self-employment service where folks that are on disability that might want to start their own business and become self-employed, I met with that resource person, and she was meeting with a couple folks down in this area to help them potentially with business planning and looking at the feasibility of them starting their own business. So again, if they can start their own business, they're self-employed, that's a job. And so, you know, that's important stuff, too. REAP, Center for Rural Affairs, the REAP program, Women's Business Center, we met with Monica Braun, the director of the Women's Business Center, and the area representative, Janelle Moran. They talked to us about, of course, they've got available loan funds, and we can make connections to them. But also, they just connected with Alice Ditman of Cordova Skir Bank, has had a small loan fund, particularly for women in business, and it's a small $5,000 loan, but REAP has reached out to adjacent counties around Lancaster, because she was pretty focused on doing Lancaster County. Now, Gage County folks are eligible for that, those funds. So in particular, the target is for women in business, it is, it can be for others, but that's their target, and they talked to us about that. So, you know, other than that, we stay busy with webinars, training. I did have an opportunity to attend the Mid-America Economic Development Conference in Chicago, and that was to learn more about what site selectors and the competitiveness all around that, what they're looking for, how we market to those folks. And so, and also, we've had webinars on the whole workforce issue strategy, so there's just a lot, I guess, coming to us all the time. I want to mention also that we have, there's an informal group working on the broadband issue, and I think we can, you know, do some good things with that. I believe that that could really place Beatrice sort of high on the list as far as being a better-connected community, and so that's, I just want to mention that there is a group, and I've been a part of that, and hopefully we can, we can continue to find out good things and move that forward. So, let's see. I want to mention also, coming up then, too, that I think at our next, January 15th meeting of our board, I'm going to be working with, again, Black Hills, Cheryl Black Hills and Nebraska Public Power to work on our updated strategic plan. Engage has been around almost three years now, and we had, I was very thankful, back to on the recertification work that we did, that we had a plan, Smart Solutions helped us with that plan. Now it's time to, you know, with new director, you know, some changes here and there, but that we review our strategic plan, make updates, and move forward. So that's going to be part of what we're going to be doing here in January, February for Engage. And also, there's been, I think, a request and a real interest in doing the housing study for the area, not only Beatrice but the whole county. And so, you know, it sounds like our board would really probably like to move that forward, and so I'm working on, again, with Tobias, information on that, and, you know, what should we have as far as the scope of that study, and, you know, what's it going to cost, you know, all of the logistics in getting that done? So I think, again, you know, we've heard time and time again, sometimes when companies are hiring executive professionals, you know, they're not finding the housing stock here that they need. So, you know, a lot of them are going to Lancaster County to live, and we don't want that. So what, that's one of the issues. There could be other issues with housing that we, that could come from the study that, you know, we could all learn from and benefit from, so, okay? Any questions on my report?
Questions? Rick?
Tell me more about the self-employment services. Is that just for people with disabilities, or is it...
Right, that's their focus. They're funded or they're ran by the Abilities Fund, but, you know, we know that there's other resources. If they're not, if they're not disabled, there's others that we can connect folks to, so that, you know, they're, they're just a special service for that purpose.
And they have money available, then?
They serve in a technical assistance capacity, so they help folks develop plans in the feasibility study. I mean, that's really important when folks are looking at a business, and that's, they do work with that. So, yeah, if you know folks, I mean, those referrals could be made, and they're willing to go across the state and help with that, so, mhm. Okay?
Anybody else?
All right, thanks for your time. I hope it was...
Anyone from the audience have any comments? Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, Sheena, thank you very much, too. Okay, next item on the agenda, resolutions, reappointing various city officials. I'd like to introduce resolution number 5717.
Mayor, I move that resolution number 5717 be passed and approved.
Second. Been moved by Catlin, seconded by Billsbach, that resolution number 5717 be passed and adopted. Any discussion? From the council? From the audience? And your vote, please. That is passed, seven to zero.
Mayor, I move that resolution number 5718 be passed and approved.
Second. Been moved by Catlin, seconded by Billsbach, that resolution number 5717 be passed and adopted. Any discussion? From the council? From the audience? And your vote, please. That is passed, seven to zero. Resolution number 5717 has been passed and adopted. Next is a resolution executing a preliminary engineering service agreement settlement with Shimmer Associates for the Beatrice Hannibal Park Trail Project.
Mayor, I move that resolution number 5718 be passed and adopted.
Second. Moved by Catlin, seconded by Cook, that resolution number 5718 be passed and adopted. Discussion?
Mayor, if you will, this is a resolution or an agreement that INDURR has required as part of our trail project that goes from the water park over to Hannibal Park, along the section where the school has just purchased ground. That's where the trail's looking to go. We're not looking to move the trail any, from the initial discussions. When INDURR came out and did their initial review, they noticed that some of the property owners on the west side of that property have kind of encroached upon what would be the school's property. INDURR is concerned about there may be, may be some property rights that those individuals may have as a result of that encroachment, and they want to take time to research all of the deeds to those properties, just to ensure exactly where the property's on after there is no problems with regards to ownership or anything else that may hang up the project in the future. So that's what this additional agreement is for, is for the engineering firm to come down and do that research on the property along that stretch there.
Would there be an imminent domain problem or anything like that?
No, I don't think it's going to be any problem. We already have a utility easement that runs through there that they can't encroach upon, that we could use as part of our right of way if need be. I don't foresee this being a problem, but INDURR just wants to be certain before they proceed with any federal-funded project.
And our cost is going to be about $2,800?
Yes.
Okay. That's 20% of the total, which is almost $14,000. Questions, comments? Anyone? Anyone from the audience? Mr. Catlin? Oh, I beg your pardon. Your vote, please. That passed, seven to zero. Resolution number 5718 has been adopted. Next item is item C, a resolution entering into an interlocal agreement with the Plymouth Rural Fire District for the purpose of providing EMS services to their service area in and around Gage County.
Mayor, I move that resolution number 5719 be passed and adopted.
Second. Seconded by Partey, moved by Catlin, seconded by Partey, that resolution 5719 be passed and adopted. Tobias?
I see Chief Dakey. Chief, you want to handle, talk about this?
Oh, I beg your pardon, I didn't see you come up.
It's not the anti-pointing. For those of you that are new on the council, we began advanced life services towards the turn of the last century, and that's the paramedic service. We're the only ones in our area, and shortly thereafter, we began a paramedic tiering service, where if there's a certain criteria of call, chest pain, stroke, motor vehicle accidents, they would simultaneously dispatch the local ambulance service, Plymouth in this case, and then us, so that way we can provide that higher-level service. And, oh gosh, probably for about four or five years now, I've been trying to get agreements, going, it's been at a glacier pace, but it is what it is. And we got one with Diller a few years ago, working on to it and all the other neighbors. And basically, this ties up any of the billing issues that have come up in the past. This way, there's an agreement that we can share the billing information. If our paramedic rides onboard their ambulance, then we charge them a tiering fee. If the patient rides with us, then we just bill the patient as we would any other type of medical call. And this also basically has a statement in there, you know, we've only got so many resources, if we're not available and they need us, it is what it is. They understand that we're not coming by notification, so. At that, that's, any questions?
Chief?
Mr. Kerr?
When we, when we go over to one of the other ones, and their ambulance is the first one to respond, they catch the call, and then they need our assistance, what is the liability of ours? Does it stay with that department or that city, or does it come to us if we take it over?
Well, from the patient's, ew, wow, excuse me, from the patient care standpoint, that's on us. It doesn't matter if we're in a helicopter, a car, a van, whatever, but as far as, like, if we're riding with them and something happens accident-wise, then it would be going on to them.
Since we're now making, starting to make these contracts with the outer county, do we get any reimbursement from the county itself on a yearly base?
Yes, we still receive that money that we do from the county every year, which I think is $180,000.
From their county, though?
Oh, no, yeah, we don't get anything from Jefferson. Jefferson County doesn't help out the providers like Gage County does.
Phil?
Mr. Dakey, if we are called out and we come back with no patients, do we still render a bill?
Yes, yes.
I was trying to find that, but I couldn't find...
I believe it's $125 per call.
I believe so. I'd have to...
If we make it halfway across the county, then we're...
Right.
Covered.
Isn't that a change, however?
Yes.
That's new to this agreement. In the current practice, if we got called out and we didn't transport or we didn't tier, we didn't get paid. Under this agreement, if we don't do either one of those, we still get at least $125, which should help us recover the cost of, you know, fuel and maintenance and some of those things on the vehicles.
Didn't we just redo the prices on the ambulance and the fire calls not long ago?
Yes, we did.
And we didn't include that, an empty, we get called out and we come back empty, wasn't... Wasn't...
No, yeah, we didn't put it in there. Yeah, that's an oversight.
When those things roll, they need to be, we need to have a cost factor in there somewhere. I mean, it's their time, our money, well, the taxpayers' money, it's gas, everything. I think maybe we should revisit.
The issue is there's going to be...
I think we should.
The issue there's going to be is not all, in this case, you want to bill Plymouth. Plymouth isn't necessarily the one who dispatches us out to that call. So, it'd be hard to bill them if they're not the ones who asked us to come. In this case, now you have an actual agreement where they acknowledge that that's a price they're going to have to pay and be charged, and they're okay with it.
But I'm saying...
Just to have that as a part of a resolution, that would be one issue that would be out there.
Yeah.
Any other questions from anybody on the city council? From the general public? All right. Chief Dekey, thank you. All right. Your vote, please. That passed seven to zero. Resolution Number 5719 has been passed and adopted. Next is Item D, Resolution Executing a Transmission Services Agreement Between the City and Nebraska Public Power District.
Mayor, I move that Resolution Number 5720 be passed and adopted.
Second.
It's been moved by Catlin, seconded by Kerr. That 5720 be passed and adopted. Tobias?
This is an agreement that we have with MPBD. We've had one with them for a number of years. It's simply an update to that agreement, and the update in that is just an increase in the price. MPBD asks us to go out and perform certain services for them. When we do that, this agreement sets forth the price that we then bill back to MPBD for those services. Pat Feist indicated at the Board of Public Works meeting that the prices that we are able to charge MPBD do cover our cost. This isn't a large amount of time that is required for us to perform the services for MPBD, and he felt it was sufficient.
It's like about a $13,000 increase. Is that correct?
In this matter, no, it's, we bill them per month or per occurrence, and so it just depends on how many times we go out and perform. That is the NDR agreement.
Okay. Yeah, that's the wrong one. Yep.
So, it's, it's an increase of a couple dollars. It's not a huge increase, but it does cover our cost.
That's okay, Mayor. If you can get us some extra money, bring it in. We'll take it.
Is this just in the city limits? Or do we go further out of ways?
Generally, it's going to be just in the city limits. If you go outside, they're going to ask Norris to go out and do most of that work. But mostly, it's going to the substations and doing some checking and those kind of things.
Any other questions from the public? If not, your vote, please. And that passed seven to zero. Ordinance number, Resolution Number 5720 has been passed and adopted. Next is a resolution prohibiting parking along 19th Street and establishing a loading and unloading zone along the east side of 19th Street near the intersection, intersections of Lincoln and Grant Streets.
Mayor, I move that Resolution Number 5721 be passed and adopted.
Second.
It's been moved by Catlin, seconded by Party. That Resolution Number 5721 be passed and adopted. And your discussion?
I'll take this one. Mayor, as you remember, we had a, we were contacted by David Party, who's a property owner that owns a duplex on the northwest corner of the intersections of 19th Street and Grant Street. This is directly west of Lincoln Elementary School. A number, about two years ago or so, maybe a little over a year ago, we had updated this area in regards to recommendations by the Traffic Committee in regards to information we got from safer routes. People were parking along the west side of Lincoln, of 19th Street there in front of the duplex. Children, as they were coming back and forth, running across between vehicles across 19th Street, as we all know is one of the busiest streets in the city. And so, the recommendation was to remove parking. In the process of approval of that resolution, the resolution and what ultimately was signed out there, there was a discrepancy that was noted at the last meeting we had a couple months ago. The resolution noted that the parking restrictions out there were to be dedicated during school hours and school days. The restrictions that were out there matched closer to what the exhibit was to that resolution, which is it removed parking permanently all the time along the west side of 19th Street between Lincoln and Grant. We were assigned by this body to go back and review this as the Traffic Committee. I contacted city engineer James Burrows and gave him some instructions and asked him to take a look at this again and give us some insight into kind of the traffic analysis with the intersections, the corners, the driveways, the alleyway, which is a functional, highly-used alleyway. I provided that information to James, and James came back with some different information. And if James wants to come up here, he can kind of explain some of that. But just of what I got back from him is from most measurable standards, when you're looking at site triangles coming out of both Lincoln Street, the alleyway to the south, the driveway for Mr. Party's duplex, and then Grant Street, due to the fact you have a number of exits, essentially, crossways, all along that one block length, if you were to use any measure, and if I'm misquoting this, James, you can correct me, by most site triangles, there at least, there wouldn't, we could put no parking due to the site restrictions of everybody coming in and out of all those different portions. James also did another analysis in regards to the radius, and he can probably explain that better than I can.
Well, one of the things that we also look at is if you would have parking there, there's set standards about how far the parking should start from an intersection. And so, if you've seen some figures I had provided earlier, is once you set those distances up, and you have the driveway, and you have the alleyway, there wasn't even enough room left to put a standard parking space in there. Standard parking spaces are normally 19 to 20 foot long. We had somewhere like 17 foot and 11 feet. And I guess the big thing that made me a little weary of this, of allowing parking, is the fact that if you had parking in front of this establishment, they would be having to back out onto an arterial street, and you'd have cars on both sides impeding their vision, trying to back out onto an arterial street, which, to me, is a, is a bad idea no matter which way you look at it. So, with those triangles that, that Greg was mentioning, and just with the parking and where you should start them in terms of an intersection, I just didn't feel like it was a good fit to have parking in this area.
And James, I know on, on the alleys and the streets, you have the site triangles. Does that also include driveways? Do you, do you do the site triangles on the...
Yeah, there is, there is some site triangles you can include on alleys. I mean, the one thing we got to be a little, little weary of, when you look at site triangles, if you put site triangles on everything in the city, you'd have no parking anywhere. I mean, it's just the way it is. But we tried to use them, and that's why I also looked at where the parking stalls could be placed if you did allow them. And once I did that, there was still not enough room to put those parking stalls there.
And am I mistaken, Greg? Hasn't he begun using the north side of that property as a parking lot?
I, I contacted Mr. Party last week when this was set for tonight's hearing. I did let him know that it would be scheduled for tonight. He called me this afternoon. Unfortunately, he was not able to attend due to illness, but he did let me know. He also had contacted his neighbor to the north and said, I don't believe anybody came for that tonight. But I did stop by on Friday to just re-verify how we signed it, every single step of it, all the way down 19th Street. And when I did go out there on the north side of that duplex, there were two vehicles parked off of the alley on the property. So, I don't know if that's something that Mr. Party specifically has permitted, but it's taking place up there. He also has his two garages, one for each duplex, and he also has two driveway stalls as well. So, but just to note, the recommendation tonight, after we discussed it with city administration, is to leave it as it is signed, which is no parking along this area due to the number of entrances off of 19th Street for Lincoln, Grant Alley, and driveway, due to the fact that it's right across the street from a very busy elementary school.
James, in that alley, there's no curbs in that alley, correct?
No. It's a rock, it's a rock alley.
So, if he did want to utilize that as, as a parking driveway, basically, all he needed to do would be rock it, correct? He wouldn't have any curb cuts or anything like that?
No, no.
Can he get by with rocking it as opposed to paving it?
Yeah, it's rock currently right now, and I believe in back there off, off the property, it's rock up to some garages that are there.
Yeah, there's a number of people that use it as their central, especially those that face Lincoln Street. They access through the alley most of their parking.
Yeah, when I drove up there, I thought that's what I saw, too. So, I was just verifying it with you.
So, if and when they are, do build a different school, and that parking goes, I mean, can that be changed back, parking?
You have the, you have the appropriate width in this area for that, but anytime, I guess, you're going to hear me say this a lot, anytime we have arterial streets where you have high traffic and then entering and exiting on your cross streets, if it's an arterial street, of course, I would like to have no parking on the streets. Is that a reality? Probably not. But it's face 19th is one of our main corridors in terms of traffic. So, if it's not a signalized intersection, we take a chance on having a dangerous intersection. Or if you're backing out, that's what I'm concerned about, of a driveway that's along 19th Street. A lot of the houses, you know, face the side roads. They don't need access off of, directly off of 19th Street. In this case, they built a duplex, and to fit the duplex in, they built it north-south, and the only way they can get access was coming out to 19th Street. So, that's where we're at today.
Any other questions? From the public? I'll ask for your vote. That is approved seven to zero. Resolution Number 5721 has been adopted. Next is the public forum. Public forum is for the presentation of an item by the general public to the city council for consideration at a later date. No discussion or action will be taken by the city council at this time. Is there anyone here for the public forum? Okay, seeing none. Further consideration of approval of public funding requests from Main Street Beatrice.
Mayor, I move that the public funding requests from Main Street Beatrice for the Preservation Month and Mother's Day Tour in the amount of $221.41 be approved.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Kerr. That public funding request from Main Street in the amount of $221 be approved. Michael?
These funding requests that we're bringing for you tonight are very similar to what we had last year with the different events that we have going on. Obviously, you know, I guess if you have any questions on those, you know, please do let us know. But I think they're, they're pretty straightforward and explained there in those applications.
Any comments?
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Do you guys keep track of the number of individuals that go on these tours?
Party? Sorry.
Somebody? Do you guys keep track of the number? I mean, do you know if it's 10 this year and 10 last year?
We, we did, and I don't know if I actually have those numbers right here in front of me. Last year was a record number of people that participated. We had something like over 50 people just in that one specific tour. We're hoping to add additional events. If you remember last year, we also had the House and Home, the Smithsonian National Traveling Exhibit, that ended up being a part of, of that. And so, we had a lot of other activities going on. I know that Gage County Historic Preservation Group is planning on hosting some additional activities with that. And so, this, this just is a host of different things, from that Mother's Day Tour to some of those other events that are going to end up being planned, to also some of the stuff that we do with the schools. The schools get involved in doing some different activities with this as well, as they try to kind of identify what some of the different things are, some of the buildings they identify with that are historic in Beatrice. And so, it, it really does reach out to a variety of different levels. But, yeah, the kind of the, the big, I guess, landmark event is that, that Mother's Day Tour.
It'd be kind of nice to know what the numbers are, if they're actually increasing or not.
I'll have to look and see. Of course, I've only been a part of the one, but I can look back and see if we have records of the, the past several years.
It'd be kind of nice to know how many of these were out-of-town people. I hate to see just the same 40 or 50 people doing it when it's all just the same group. Be nice if there was advertising, you know, we go to Lincoln or Omaha or Marysville.
Exactly. Last year, a large number of the people we had were from Lincoln. We had folks from Marysville, folks from Fairbury, and many of those people came to Beatrice and had dinner. They, they kept calling me, wanting to know where are places that are open for Mother's Day, where are good locations to bring their families to? And so, it definitely kept, even some of our people in Beatrice kept them in town. Instead of them leaving, their kids came to town, or their grandmother, whatever, came to town to join them on this tour. And so, I think it definitely does have that, that impact.
Thank you. I think in the past, it's really been determining, you know, what the weather was like, too. I remember some years it's been...
Yeah.
Not so good, and attendance wasn't very good. But I think it's somewhere between 15 and 100, I think.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, last year, it almost, it was good that there was a couple of us conducting the tour because we had so many folks. Yes, it's definite, pretty well-attended for that one event. And then we have all the spinoffs that come just as a result of Preservation Month itself.
Any other discussion from the public?
Mayor, the only thing I would note on a fiscal note is of the $15,000 in this line item, we have $11,600 after the first quarter, and the two requests tonight are about $900. So, you have ample funds in that line item to handle both requests.
Very good.
How does that fund get refunded?
At the start of every budget year, so October 1st.
Okay.
On the funding request for Preservation Month and Mother's Day Tour, your vote, please. That passed seven to zero.
Six oh one.
I beg you, beg your pardon. Oh, you're abstaining? Sorry.
It's still passed.
What's that?
It's still passed.
It's still passed. And the next one is a funding request from Main Street for the Beatrice Farmers Market Event in the amount of $679.44.
Mayor, I move that the public funding requests for Main Street Beatrice for the Beatrice Farmers Market Event in the amount of $679.44 be approved.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Kerr. That the request for $679.44 be approved for the Beatrice Farmers Market Event. Michael, anything further?
The Beatrice Farmers Market, we are seeing that one actually grow. We've had more vendor participation. We're starting to see some different diversity in that. I hope that we will continue to see that. We've had quite a few inquiries as far as vendors go, and something that we definitely have noticed is we're starting to pick up more people from Fairbury and some of the other smaller communities. Fairbury's Farmers Market just about died last year, just lack of vendors, whereas ours actually stayed the same, if not grew. And so, we started seeing quite a few more faces of people from Fairbury that were coming in. So, definitely a good thing for our community, because I'm guessing that they aren't just coming just to go and buy $5 worth of, of produce and whatnot. I'm sure that there's quite a bit of other stuff that they're doing as well. And so, that's definitely nice to see. Almost all of our vendors are local folks, or right within the, the surrounding area. And so, that's another, another good thing. Aunt Mary's is definitely our gracious host. We no longer have to worry about the liability of being on public street and having to deal with closing, all that. And so, definitely have to thank them for being a continued partner in this and opening up their parking lot and, and that location there.
Do you charge vendors fees?
We, we do. And in the past, almost every single year, Main Street has still taken a, a loss on trying to host this event. That is something that we're definitely going to be looking at this year, is how to adjust those so that we, in partnership with you guys and with those vendor fees, we can continue to more successfully bring this about for, for the community. You know, as it's starting to grow, I feel like we can definitely justify that and then hopefully lessen our dependence on, on just needing to do these types of things.
Any other comments, questions? Anybody from the public? If not, your vote, please. And that's six zero with one abstention. I want to remind everyone that the January City Council meeting will be on January 19th, and that our work session will be on January 26th. And we are now going to go into executive session to discuss union negotiations.
Mayor, I move that we go into close, that the Beatrice City Council go into closed session at 7:49 PM for the protection of public interest to discuss union negotiations.
Second.
Been moved by Catlin, seconded by Bob Morgan, that we go into a closed session at 7:50 PM for the protection of public interest to discuss union negotiations.